Good evening, I was waiting for our audio. Are we on? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of West Covina's Council Meeting of December 4, 2012. We will start our meeting with the invocation by Reverend Alexandra Conrad with St. Martha's Episcopal Church and the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Rob Satello. Please rise.
(inaudible) Loving God, we thank you for West Covina, where we live, work, and play. Thank you for the tremendous gifts we all receive here. Thank you for all those who work and serve, especially for Mayor Shelley Sanderson. Mayor Protem Herford, Councilmember Robert Satello, Frederick Sykes, and Michael Tuohy. Help all of us to work together in a spirit of unity and peace so that we can make this a better and better place to live, work, and play. Amen.
Mayor Sanderson, here. Mayor Protem Herford.
Here.
Councilmember Satello.
Here.
Councilmembers Sykes.
Here.
Councilmember Tuohy. Mr. Tuohy will not be here with us this evening. He's having some family issues, and we send our prayers out to his family at this time. Mr. City Manager, reporting out from closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The record should reflect that the City Council and the successor agency did convene the closed-session items to consider the items as listed on the successor agency's special meeting notice and amended notice of special meeting of the West Covina City Council. This is my report out from the closed session. First, turning to the agenda for the successor agency, and it also appears on the agenda for the amended City Council special meeting. The item is Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, Case of City of West Covina versus Hassan Imports. The record should reflect that all members of the council were present with the exception of Councilmember Tuohy. There was a report on this item provided by special counsel to the city and the successor agency. There was no final action taken on this item, and I have nothing further to report on this item. That concludes the items on the successor agency's agenda. Remaining items are City Council items. Turning first to the first item on the amended agenda for the City Council, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 concerning the various labor negotiation groups listed on the agenda. Record should reflect that all council members were present for this item with the exception of Councilmember Tuohy. There was a report provided by staff on this item. There was no final action taken, and I have nothing further to report on this item. Next item in order, Public Employment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 concerning the position of City Manager was not considered. There was nothing done on this item. Following remaining two items on the city's agenda are Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, Daniel Wilbur versus City of West Covina. All members of the City Council were present for this item with the exception of Councilmember Tuohy. There was a presentation provided by City Attorney's Office concerning this item. There was a direction provided to legal counsel on this item. However, there was no final action, and I have nothing further to report on this item. And with the final item, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A concerning the case of West Covina Improvement Association versus City of West Covina. There was a report provided by legal counsel on this item. There was no final action taken on this item, and I have nothing further to report. And that concludes my report out from closed session.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is any changes. Mr. City Manager.
I have no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. We'll drop down to our -- well, we have no presentations this evening. However, our next item that comes forward would be our oral communications, which we have yellow speaker cards at the top of the stairs. If you'd like to speak on items on the agenda, or if you have a city issue that we can help you with, please bring those comments forward, fill out a card, and submit that to our city clerk. Our first speaker this evening is Mrs. Shirley Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson and members of the City Council. And it really is great to see you sitting at the mayor's position. Thank you. First item I want to tell you is that the latest edition of Discover West Covina was very nice and informative. Thank you. The second item I would like to talk about is the Civic Center property that the injunction was all about. But first, I'd like to give you a definition of due diligence. There's one definition that says, "An investigation or audit of a potential investment. Due diligence serves to confirm all materials facts in regard to a sale." And then there's an explanation of Investopedia. Due diligence is a way of preventing unnecessary harm to either party involved in a transaction. In the past, there have been many great projects built in West Covina, and it happened under the terms of office of three of the current council members. There have also been a few not-so-great projects, but they went through anyway. This council selected five very good planning commissioners that evaluated the proposed sale of the Civic Center property for a high-rise medical building and found it not to be a good site for the project. The night it was on the planning commission, many West Covina residents spoke against it. The applicant decided to appeal the decision before the City Council, and the night of the hearing, there were at least 25-plus residents that spoke against it and perhaps an equal number of people that did not live in West Covina. The ones that did not live in West Covina only cared about getting a job and to take a prime piece of real estate that belongs to the residents of West Covina. Hopefully, prior to the planning commission meeting, there had to be a lot of research done by both the redevelopment and city staff as to whether all the required environmental and housing requirements were met. It appears from the court decision that that was not the case. Over the last few months, a council member said several times that the injunction was going to cost the city over $1 million, and I feel certain his target was the citizens that brought forth the injunction. It is my opinion that had there been due diligence on the part of the city, this project would never have gotten to the planning commission. So, the residents that brought forth filing the injunction are owed an apology by a member of this council because they did do their due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dana Sykes.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Staff. First of all, I am Dana Sykes, resident of West Covina. I have my own views, and I am my own person, so I will speak for myself. I want to give you a few definitions. First of all, West Covina is known as a bedroom community, or also known as a commuter town. And that definition is an urban community that's primary residential, from which most of the workforce commutes out to create their livelihood. These communities have little commercial or industrial activity beyond a small amount of retail oriented towards serving the residents, separated from the suburbs by green spaces. That sounds like West Covina. Okay? What do we have over here? We have 100-year-old pine trees, 100 feet tall, I'm sorry, not 100 years old, 100 feet tall. You know, pine trees grow two feet per year. Trees are the lungs of the earth. They help by giving us oxygen and breathing in oxygen. Trees help create rain as they expel moisture into the atmosphere. Their roots draw from the soil, and their leaves return it to the air. Trees clean the air we breathe by taking in carbon dioxide through the leaves and then giving off oxygen we need to breathe. So, do you think a three-foot-tall tree is going to give us the same amount of oxygen and benefits that a 100-foot-tall tree will? Hardly. And just so you know, a 100-foot-tall tree casts a shadow that is 150 feet long, so a three-foot tree would give off a shadow of 1.5 feet at best. Consequently, the buildings on the property would use more energy in the summer as well as in the winter, because shades do have a dual purpose. They do cool, and they also insulate. And just so you know, pine trees are capable of living 200 to 450 years, which is way past our lifespan. I bring all this up because I fought for that property with the planning commission as well as before this council. That property is, like I said previous times, is a jewel in our city. When people live in a bedroom community, they choose the bedroom community because they want green spaces. They want parks. They want to have something other than a big building across the street from them. When they get off a freeway, they see green spaces that's inviting. If they see concrete, you know what? I saw that in L.A. I'll just keep moving on down the freeway. That's what this brings to us. It not only brings us a buffer against the noise, it helps the environment. Three-foot-tall trees don't do that. I have two trees in my yard that I planted probably two or three years ago. They have grown, but not that much. And I've nurtured them, and they produce fruit for me, but I want them taller, because that's what's good for them as well as for the environment. When I got pregnant, well, actually, part of my pregnancy, I recycled. Even though Athens says they do it for me, I want to make sure it gets done. I'm trying to do my part to make this planet better, because our children, and even children that are not ours, we have a duty to leave them something that is at least as good as we had, because if we sell that land, it won't get any better. We need to do our part to make sure we're leaving a planet for our children, our grandchildren, and their children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Forrest Wilkins.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council. My name is Forrest Wilkins, resident of West Covina for 40 years. The subject that I'd like to address tonight is a possible conflict of interest. Rumors can distort what is fact. After hearing a rumor numerous times involving members of our City Council, I decided to do some fact-checking. So, I checked through public records and learned, in 2007, a Maya Nguyen, that's spelled N-G-U-Y-E-N, with a date of birth in 1957, took out a business license at 551 East Vine Street in West Covina. It appears that Maya Nguyen possibly has a daughter named Dorothy Nguyen, with a date of birth of 1978. Dorothy Nguyen is also known as Dorothy Satello, living in West Covina, and is associated with Roberto Satello, date of birth in 1975. It is possible that Dorothy and Roberto Satello are the son and daughter-in-law of Councilman Satello. So, the rumor is that members of the Satello family run the business at 551 East Vine, and the property is owned by Councilman Tuohy. Councilman Tuohy has often referred to this location as the Rockview Dairy in past meetings. If this is a coincidence, more than one person has the same name, the council can thank me for disproving this rumor. If the foregoing is fact, why was the conflict of interest never mentioned when Mr. Satello was approved to the City Council? Notice, I said approved, not elected. Any comment, Councilman Satello?
I'm sorry. We are supposed to address the council as a body, and it wouldn't be appropriate for him to have a dialogue back and forth. We have other items on the agenda. If you would like, we would be more than glad to call the City Manager's office and work something out with a meeting if you'd like to do that, so we can find out what's going on.
We'll have a few more things to say then.
Absolutely, sir.
In the past, I've noticed sometimes there has been a one or two dialogue with the speaker and the City Council person, and that's why I gave the opportunity.
Yes, sir. If you look at our rules that we do, each mayor has their own style of, you know, running their meetings, and we do have regulations, and I'll answer all questions at the end of the meetings.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I've got a question for the mayor. If this is fact, Mayor Sanderson, you state on your city website that you will investigate anything that goes before the City Council. If this is a fact, why was a conflict of interest never mentioned? Councilman Herford, if this is a fact, and as long as you have known Councilman Tuohy and Councilman Satello, why was the conflict never mentioned? And, Councilman Satello, of all people, why would you not mention the possible conflict of interest if this is a fact? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to address it at this time, Mr. Satello?
Yes.
Councilmember Satello.
This is true. My mother-in-law did lease the property from the other people who owned it, the Indian family. All right? My daughter does work there. Dorothy Satello is my daughter, and Robert Satello is my son. I don't see any conflict of interest. I get no money from it. I have nothing to do with the dairy. So, I don't understand what you're saying. Conflict of interest? This is a business that my in-law's own, and my daughter-in-law runs. I cannot see why I have any conflict of interest with this at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Bobby Reyes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Members of the Council, City Officials, and Friends. Remember, on November 22, 2011, last year, after our demonstration at the West Covina Parkway, I came and attended your meeting, and I told you of a viable option for the medical condo project. Now that the case has been settled, more or less, the question of the medical condo is moot, and academic, to use the term of lawyers. Now, may I repeat what I said on November 22? You can actually, the city can actually derive more revenues by asking, offering the same property with its 140 trees as a mini-tree park. I said even it could be called like if Chevron pays, the Chevron Mini-Tree Park. Remember, we are the city called Tree City USA, and this was the reason why my family and I decided to settle in West Covina in 1994, because we think the city is the greenest spot in San Gabriel Valley. Now, actually, we can use the slogan Tree City USA, as I said, in November last year, because if we plant like 1 million more trees, which the city of Los Angeles is attempting to do at the cost of $116 million, if we can get corporations, remember now the cap and trade, corporations are paying, so they can file out more ecology, the environment, by paying corporations that plant trees. The city can, because we have the name Tree City USA. And because of climate change, ladies and gentlemen, we call this in Philippine or in Spanish, oras de peligro. These are the hours of danger for humanity. If we don't plant more trees, which is the best way to combat global warming, there will be no more earth to live in. Now, I can go and submit to you a proposal, but think of my suggestion. We can have even, for instance, Galster Park, because it has a lot of trees. We can bid the name, the so-called naming right, call it like Shell Mini-Tree Park. That is the way. And instead of selling land, I think the city should buy land to be used to plant more trees. We go again to the city of Los Angeles. The city of Los Angeles had the foresight to buy not only the Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, it owns Ontario Airport, it owns Spandale Airport. West Covina can eventually buy properties in other cities where the home city is not planting trees. This tree itself can be the livelihood, the source of revenue for West Covina. Now, I said instead of selling, we should buy more. And if you appeal to the more than 100,000 residents of West Covina, there are so many ways of encouraging them to help, so we cut down the cost of planting trees. Now, we have to come together as a people, as a community, now that the city has lost the case on that disputed area for the medical condominium unit. I think you have to listen to the private sector, because you have been selling property, you have been selling parks. I said, let's buy more properties to plant trees, and that may be that is the solution. And West Covina can be really the, not only America's, but the world's, Tree City USA. Think of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Elsie Messman.
Mayor, Council, the city staff, and everyone here tonight. My name is Elsie Messman, and I'm also resident of West Covina. I've been coming to the council meetings off and on since December 2006, often getting discouraged and disappointing, but my sense of duty and of doing what is right always makes me come back stronger, so here I am again. This time, I was addressing Councilman Tuohy, but since he's not here, I'm going to read it anyway, because I want the people of West Covina to know what he has done. He has left the city of West Covina in a mess, and he's decided to go elsewhere. I only hope his other job employees are wise to him. Councilman Tuohy benefited from the city big time, and not only did get paid for being on the council, plus benefits, he also got paid $1,250 a month from the redevelopment agency, and most jobs were done by his clients, so there is commission there also. Now, whether this is double-dipping or triple-dipping, I don't know. As I wrote in the examiner in 2011, some of the projects were land sold to Charles Company at the Heights, no bid, to Tuohy client; condos at Sunset, McIntyre, Tuohy client; Shakespeare Park, sold to a developer, Abubehalou, a Tuohy client; Wicks Furniture Project, given to Charles Company, a Tuohy client. There are just a few of the projects that Councilman Tuohy used this council for his benefit, which not always was a benefit to the city. After all, this council only puts in yes people in a vacancy that appears. I wanted to thank Carolyn and all the people involved in the lawsuit. And by the way, Mr. Councilman Tuohy, at the last council meeting, stated that our lawsuit was to blame for the city not meeting the housing element projects. You only have to blame yourself and staff for not upgrading the housing element, so don't blame us. Listen to us for a change. Since there is little or no transparency here, I would like to remind everyone that the Oversight Board is meeting right here this Thursday at 4:00 p.m. Please attend, and you can see what our redevelopment agency has done for our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carolyn Arndt.
Good evening, Mayor Shelley, Steve, Mr. Satello, Mr. Sykes. My name is Carolyn Arndt. I've lived here since 1957, and I would like to read to you an open letter to the West Covina Citisony on the final ruling against West Covina City on selling a part of the Civic Center. On November 27, 2012, Superior Court Judge Alan J. Goodman ruled against the city's plans to sell the 140-tree wooded area next to the library. The judge requires the city to rescind its approval for the project and to take no further steps toward implementing the project until it fully complies with requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, the Planning and Zoning Law, the Surplus Land Act, and all other applicable laws and regulations. I am and continue to be mystified as to how and why the city violated so many laws in an attempt to sell this land to a private developer for commercial operation. The land was never given to option as a park or open space as required by the Surplus Land Act. In the court proceedings, it was clearly brought out that this wooded area is a berm that is a sound barrier in lieu of a freeway noise wall. To remove the berm requires the state to build a sound wall along the freeway. I wish to point out that the City Council hires a city manager and a city attorney, who are supposed to be trained professionals, to give the City Council legal and standard city management advice. Was no advice given on any, on many laws broken here, or did the City Council simply ignore advice? At any rate, I profess a lack of confidence in our current City Council, our city manager, and the city attorney. Is our city going to proceed henceforth, breaking all of California laws which relate to housing and development? The West Covina Improvement Association respectfully requests the mayor immediately seek a council motion, as required by the judge's ruling, to rescind its approval of this project and take down the commercial lease sign. I also request that the city request review every future and ongoing developmental project, including the Wicks project, to determine if all California laws are being followed. Also, any future surplus land, including the wooded Civic Center area, should be presented to West Covina citizens, so that we can be given the option to preserve the land as open or park space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, I don't know if at the time would be appropriate if you wanted to respond. I know for the community, maybe people that aren't familiar with the situation, we can do a real quick, brief explanation of that, if this is a good time.
Let me start with having the attorney perhaps address the outcome of the judge's ruling on that, and then I need to all add more comments to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and Madam Mayor, and members of City Council. We do have David King from the City Attorney's Office present to explain any questions you might have concerning the details of the case. But just in general, I did want to just kind of clarify what the court's ruling was for the benefit of the council and benefit of the public. The court did not issue a ruling which prohibits the city from proceeding with the project. The court's decision indicated that there were certain aspects of the city's review of the project that required further work. Specifically, under the California Environmental Quality Act, the procedures that the city used in assessing the potential impacts from the project were deemed by the court not to be sufficient, and so in order for the project to proceed, the city would have to evaluate the project under a broader scope of an analysis, under an environmental impact report. And also, the court did indicate that the surplus And also, the court did indicate that the Surplus Lands Act is something that would have to be complied with for the project to proceed. And so it is correct that the court did require the project to be stopped, but it's not a correct statement that that decision prohibits the project from proceeding in the future. Essentially, if these issues, review issues, are addressed by the city in the future, and if the project applicant wishes to proceed with the project, then the project would proceed along those same lines in the future. So I just wanted to clarify that, since there may be a different perception out there. And then if the council does have any questions, more specific questions of a legal nature, then I'm happy to explain those also.
Okay, thank you very much for the report. If there's no other comment.
If I might add, just one other thing. You may want to address the fact that we still need to await a writ from the court that leaves the final decision out, addresses the final decision.
Mr. King can address that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council. That is correct. At this point, the court has ruled in the case, but there is no official order from the court. The procedure is that the plaintiff's attorneys, which is the association's counsel, would prepare a writ, and then our office, as the City Attorney's Office, and also the developers' council would have a chance to look over that before the judge signs it. Once the judge signs it, then we will advise you accordingly.
Thank you very much. With that, we will go on. Thank you all for your patience, and I hope that if you understand what's going on. If not, please call the city manager's office, and I would be more than glad to meet with you, with staff or whatever, to answer any questions that you may have. The next speaker is Caesar Marquin.
Hello, City Council, members, Mayor. My name is Caesar Marquin. Earlier this year, my father and my wife were struggling with cancer. I started trying to help them out as much as I can to support them as much as I could as a young family and as a young father. I started doing little benefits and foundations, or for local foundations and stuff for cancer. I ask of you guys today, if I can get a little bit of support. There's a 557-mile marathon going from San Francisco to Los Angeles in June, and I'd like to see if I can get any kind of sponsorship from the city of West Covina. Done quite a bit of volunteering lately for the city of West Covina. I'd be proud to be able to support or have that support and also be able to display it. I have all the information that I can submit to you guys at any time for the foundation. It would just be to benefit Cancer Society and also AIDS for people that are under privilege and stuff. Basically, that was it. Thank you very much for the time and for your consideration.
Thank you. Yes, I was going to suggest, City Manager, get you a card, and please call City Hall, and we can talk about that. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Our next speaker is Evo Mesa.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. On short notice, I didn't really have a lot of time to investigate it, but I've had a, well, before I go on, I want to commend all the speakers ahead of me, which was really enlightening. I'd like to talk about the service that I have with Verizon Internet. I used to have Charter, but their phone service is terrible, so I decided, well, I'm going to try Verizon. The problem is Verizon only offers high-speed internet, and they don't offer FiOS. And high-speed internet is a real contradiction because it's the worst service I've ever had. And I was hoping that maybe the city would do something where they can put some pressure on them. I know some of the surrounding cities are on FiOS, and I've been getting postcards from Verizon telling me to sign up for FiOS, yet, I mean, I get these postcards every week. And up till now, you know, they don't offer it, and they don't have a timetable. So I'd appreciate if maybe there's some way where the council or the city can help us out. You know, from what I understand, where we live, it's the furthest point from the station, so the service is where, you know, you can't load anything down, and I've tried to get better, higher, higher speed on it, and they tell me it's not going to help. So the only way I think that we have is if we can get some, a better service, such as FiOS, through them. And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. If you could respond or maybe give him a card, and we can also get with him as well.
I'm going to give you a card, but I'm going to have Mr. Freeland speak to you, because I know that we've had a number of discussions in the past with Verizon about this. I know there's been some litigation and things that have caused the, that addresses your question. So I'm going to get your card, and I'll have Mr. Freeland give you a call tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening, and I'm hoping that we can help you any way we can. Our next speaker is, unless, Chris, did you want to briefly respond?
Certainly. Just for the benefit of the community, back in 2006, the state of California deregulated the cable industry here in our community throughout the state of California, where previously Charter Communication had the exclusive franchise rights to provide cable service in our community. With the deregulation, that opened up the community and other communities to the open market to allow other providers like Time Warner, Verizon, and those providers to come into communities and provide their services. Verizon, at the time, did, has come into our community in certain locations. Their intent is to build out in our community like they've built out in other communities like Pomona, San Dimas. However, when the economy decided to take a downturn, that's when a lot of the businesses stopped with their expansions until the economy improved, what we've been told by Verizon. The city council, the city is very supportive of Verizon coming in and allowing the FiOS use, because those residents in our communities do have the FiOS, have been very happy with that FiOS system. So we will go ahead and reach out to Verizon once again, encourage them. I know the city council has been supportive of that in the past, and so will continue to do so.
Thank you so much for your response, Chris. Our next speaker is Irene Fleck.
Good evening. I'm going to revert back to happier things, because the library is here and doing well. You know how I feel about these other items. The first thing I'll mention, however, is that's sort of exciting at the library, and this is in conjunction with the city of West Covina and with the San Gabel Valley Literature Festival. That's coming up in February already, and Lyndell, pardon me, Lyndell Morgan has been very, very helpful in getting together with the library and the friends of the library and the city. And I think this is going to be very exciting in February. The other thing is Goldster Park. Thank you very much for supporting Goldster Park. They have something that is coming up that I think is really great fun, and I've brought the little flyer. They have Fossil Weekend, and that's not to do with old fossils, that's real fossils. And their little flyer came out and says, if you think you're strong enough to break 7 million years-old conglomerate rock, and you're nine years older, so that includes all of you guys, you can come up to Goldster Park and look for fossil shark teeth at Goldster. And we actually have shark teeth that have been found in the rocks there, and that's part of our history there. This is going to be on Saturday, December 15, at 11:00 a.m. to 3:00, and then Sunday, December 16, at 11:00 a.m. to 3:00. So you can come up there, and you're supposed to bring your own hammer, preferably a rock hammer. But they do the most wonderful things for adults and for kids, and I just wanted to let you know that Goldster is a happy place, so please keep supporting it. And then, of course, the other thing is the library, which you know I support greatly. We've got a lot of things going on there. We're becoming a family place, which is a very exciting thing. And also, on Saturdays, when you're tired of seeing all the people downtown being disgruntled, come over to the library on December 8, and take a break and have hot cocoa and a family movie. And they tell me the movie is really great. And then on the next Saturday, on the 15th, the holiday music program, Mr. Craig Newton comes, and he has all kinds of instruments, and this is for a family program, and the kids and the adults get to try all these instruments, and he puts on a fabulous program. So please come on over to the library and have some fun. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Monica Ferraris.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Sanderson and Councilman. I'm here representing the Greater West Covina Business Association, and last year, we had a fantastic summer concert series. We definitely are very thankful for the partnership that you provided for us last year, and we're really looking forward to this year. Our 2013 year looks very promising as far as all of the events that we have on our agenda, and we're very grateful to partner up with you for our 2013 series this coming year. Thank you.
That concludes our oral communications, and I'd like to take this opportunity real quickly, since we're talking about the summer concerts, that I would like to invite the community and make sure they're aware of all the wonderful events that we do have. Sometimes I find myself as a parent, being, you're busy, you've got to work, you've got to go to the grocery store, you have so many things to do, and then you hear of an event, you go, oh, you know, I'm just not going to take the time. But you know something? I went to the tree lighting last night, and it was so much fun. Westfield Mall, as well, combined with the city of West Covina, had a tree lighting event. They had hot cocoa served by California Pizza Kitchen, and the youth organization in West Covina is growing, so we need to keep those kids active. They had crafts, arts and crafts. I brought my six-year-old, and I'm so glad I did, because Santa was there, and Santa had storytime, and it was just absolutely amazing. And I have to share a story. My son walks up to Santa and shakes his hand and says, I need to talk to you. And I thought, oh, no, here we go, he's going to go on with a list. And I didn't really hear what he said, and then later I asked him, I said, what did you say to Santa? And he said, oh, I just wanted to thank him for all the gifts that he always brings me. And I thought, that was so neat. And then I have a little mailbox outside, and he puts a letter in it every day, and Santa writes back. And the letter today, I took a peek at it, and it said, I love you, Santa, and thank you. And it's just the cutest thing, and the city of West Covina provided that opportunity for my child that I will always cherish. I have some amazing pictures, and as a matter of fact, I'm taking him as well, and I hope many residents come to Del Nordy Park tomorrow. We're doing our grand opening at 4:00 for that park. And get out and go to those summer concerts. It's such a wonderful thing, what Greater West Covina does for the city of West Covina, and what West Covina provides our community. It's just, you know, we have to take the time, slow down, and enjoy, and see. You know, I've been going to the malls, too, and I'm seeing a lot of shoppers, a lot of people smiling and happy, and so just wanted to let the community know that they're appreciated and thank West Covina. So we'll move on with our agenda. Oh, Mr. City Manager has his hand up.
I was just going to add to your invitation for the public for tomorrow, is that if you can reminisce on the old rockets growing up, we'll be bringing back some of the rocket ship as part of the playground equipment for the kids.
Right, great. Well, thank you so much. We look forward to tomorrow and many other events we have coming up this next year. Looking forward to it. So the next item on our agenda we have is our consent calendar. Any items that council would like to pull, or I would entertain a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we drop down to the successor agency. Mr. City Manager, is that correct? We recess the city council meeting. We have items on the successor agency. I don't have an agenda for that item. Do we have anything on that?
Yes, we do.
Do you have that?
Find mine as well here.
Select it on my desk. Thank you, Rob. There with me a moment? Okay, Madam City Clerk, roll call for the successor agency.
Chairman Sanderson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Hertford?
Here.
Board Member Satella?
Here.
Board Member Sykes?
Here.
Board Member Tui?
Mr. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
I have no changes to the agenda.
Okay.
All items are on consent.
Okay, and I see the consent, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zero. Next item is any comments, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment for the successor agency.
So moved to adjourn.
Motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. We drop down to Mayor and Councilmember reports. Any reports, AV1, 2, 3, 4, conference meetings? Everyone looks quiet. Then we'll go down to City Council requests for studies, investigations, item 13. Councilmember Frederick Sykes, you have the floor, sir.
Just recently, we drafted an ordinance to address blight that came about due to the, in particular, due to the economic downturn, and we were looking at the banks and how to get them into compliance. And so the item that I'm asking support on is just a segue from that to address blight from other perspectives. In various parts of the city, I have seen a number of properties, both the multi-residential living areas, as well as single-family homes, that are having some issues. And so I'm just simply asking that if we could perhaps look at what Covina has done to assist our city with being able to more quickly respond to requests for code enforcement. And that would be, for instance, what we had from issues that I see with vehicles parked in driveways that are inoperable, to where we have, without permit, we have folks that are adding to their homes. And then, just recently, we had such a serious problem with a leased, it was a business area that was up for lease, and we had to take, in the short term, we had to take the owner to court in order to get them to clean the area up. So I'm hoping that I can get your support tonight to have our city staff, please look and see how we can address the issue. And with Covina, they have built in to their ordinance the ability to augment their services. And I'm just asking that if the city can, staff can do some research on that to see how we can bring forth and draft a measure that would help us address the issue, realizing that we do have the inability right now to respond quickly to requests for a lot of our code enforcement issues. And if we can get this drafted, similar to what Covina's done, perhaps we can enhance our code enforcement and get it back on track to protect the property in the city, as well as the quality of life. Thank you.
Just clarification. I think Covina's was regarding the area with a lot of apartments, so that's what you're looking for, is the direction Covina took? Is that what you want to look at?
That would be part of it, yes.
Okay. What else?
I mentioned that we had a business area. There was a property that was for lease, and we spent resources in court, but I don't think there was any tooth to, any strength to trying to put them in order other than the court. If we can get it on the front end, instead of having to perhaps take them to court, if we can perhaps see what other cities are doing to address it prior to getting to court, I'd like to see if we can do that, too.
Okay, I just don't want, you know, I'm supportive of the apartments, the businesses. I'm happy to take a look at us, don't want to suspend a lot of money if it's going to be a time-honorous thing, but it's just a report coming back, so I'll support it.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, a while back, I know I had discussed this with you, so we may have some, I don't know if we have information, what we've already done in the past. I thought that we talked about that.
I'd have to dig those reports out, but I understand there may have been some action, or at least some reports that had been done a number of years ago, so we'll see if any of that is a- So we'll see if any of that is applicable.
I know what we have in reference to that. I, I think what I'm hearing is something to do with, because a lot of times when you have a business, a, a property or landowner that is non-existent, they don't actually live there, then the compliance probably becomes a difficult issue. And that, maybe that's kind of the direction that I'm, I'm hearing. So if staff is clear on the direction, I'll go ahead and second if Mr. Sykes wants to make that a motion, or Councilmember Sykes wants to make that a motion.
Yes, I'd like to motion that.
All second. Any other comments?
Just one, one clarification, too. If, if it's involving business owners, or it's involving apartment owners, I think they should be notified of whatever we're going to do. I don't know where, if we would do anything, but I just want to make sure they're part of the process. My thought is we'd probably come back with a report that kind of gives you some general parameters of what's going on in Covina, maybe some stuff on what happened in the past, and then seek direction from council at that time. And then you can ask for feedback.
Okay. Do you have your direction? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Four oh. That drops us down to our adjournments. I don't have any at this point. Any council comments?
I'm adjourned in memory of Bill Chase.
Would you, go ahead.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Bill Seth Chase, passed away this last two weeks ago.
Thank you. Lots of prayers, and may get the information to Chris, and we'll send them our condolences. Councilmember Sykes?
Also, I got a call from the family of Ralph Simonian. I should say, friends of the, of the family. And they indicated, first of all, that our police and fire were just outstanding in their response to this tragic incident. And the family was greatly appreciative of how they were so considered and treated with the utmost care under the circumstances. I understand that Mr. Ralph Simonian was quite active, in particular, in the city of La Puente. So if we could also add him to that list. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments? I will close by saying, I wrote down something kind of funny, and I'm going to use it to, after every meeting, call City Hall. If you need any help or any problems that you may have, please call, and, and I will do anything I can to try and help. So thank you, and our meeting is adjourned. You know what? As a new councilperson back as mayor, I do need an adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
We, a motion and a second? Steve's going to second it, because he's there. All in favor?